Yeah.
How about you, one? Beyond, uh, did I think?
Everybody else?
I'm sorry.
But I think, sorry.
Sure.
Yeah. You think this is me messing?
No, I don't.
It must be true. I don't think it's true. Which is not too bad. Yeah, towards.
At them.
I'm gonna move. I'm sorry. I didn't. It's. All. I'm still confused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, the reason.
Miss.
I guess that's.
And. We're here. We did some. For. I love that. Never miss. We got two big rooms. We are to each other and the manager's way like.
They look like your.
Those are kind of. To.
And.
So. Home. Kind of set up a home, but a college.
Yeah, so I got the. I would say you're right. She don't find out your question is true. And I just.
You're right. Take it on. So in town it was here.
But they didn't. But yeah. So they.
And then I checked when you saw me like. To check since, but to. Because certainly. Where is.
Fine.
Yeah. That's why I hear. Yeah.
I can see. Or he was. He was about that long. I. It's. I was. I was. Uh. I don't think. I don't know. I don't.
I didn't want to sound. Because what? What do you expect? There's every time. You took. This. So, um, I just want to see. Um, we had. Sensible. Interesting. The J C A.
So you mean.
Is that on there? Grab two people. In. Somewhere.
But that's what they were saying. That's what people.
You're. I'm.
I remember that part.
Please. J C A is an obvious. Why don't you have someone? Right. And we have all them.
Uh.
I know. Just thought. That was. Remote.
I'm shocked.
So I don't know if I need. I would just say there's a table that we are. Do we have a role table in there? That's why I would. The J C A senior. Table. To. Hold them back. No, it's. They're. And. I took it.
Oh, I'm.
That was. That is. What's on your. List? Yeah. Yeah. So I'm gonna. So. That's. That's. Okay. Yeah. It was. It's. Very.
Let's talk to your need, Dr. Wayne. Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Lincoln.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Selming.
President.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Everly.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Moody.
Here.
City Attorney Renee Chambers.
Here.
Our treasurer, she is Denise.
President.
In order to have a forum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a forum for this meeting.
Will you stay a moment? Question or question? Your minutes will stand down. Are any additions or directions to the minutes?
Mayor, make a motion to accept the managers they represented.
Motion. Anthony.
A second.
Second. Kevin. Further discussion? Very none in all favor, so anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Impose? Tonight, we have a presentation on the community development plan, Josh Schuster.
Good. Evening, council.
Quick. Summarize.
It is now. So first of all, I want to thank everyone for having me today for the 2024 review of the Community Development and Planning Department. Before I start, I want to recognize, you know, as the Community Development and Planning Director, I want to recognize that tomorrow would be Juneteenth. We are off to that federal holiday, and this is the month of June, which is Pride Month. So just want to reiterate, the city of Jasper is an open community for everyone, and we want to be a melting pot community. So I take that very seriously as part of my job. Addition, before I start, this is the first time you've been able to meet him, but in attendance in the back row. My intern for the summer is Wyatt Keating. Wyatt is senior at Ball State. Comes with a multitude of experience in the planning field, having done internship with the city of Muncie, as well as that county's Economic Development Council. So hopefully he can teach me a thing or two while he's here. With that said, I want to go ahead and roll into our presentation. You know, as part of our department, we oversee four boards. That'd be the Jasper Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Redevelopment Commission, as well as the Economic Development Commission. All of those meet on a monthly basis, with the exception of the E D C meets on a quarterly basis. When there's business at hand. Next item, we, you know, a large portion of the meeting time and or staff time is related to zoning petitions. The Board of Zoning Appeals in 2024 heard 68 petitions, kind of on par for where we have been in the previous two years. A little bit down, but I think that correlates kind of to what we'll see in a little bit later, where overall activity was a little bit down 2024 in general for housing and or building. Was kind of soft here. And then Nancy, last year you asked that I present the highest B Z A requests. And so these would be the top four that we've had, 11 related to setbacks, 10 for signs, seven to material compatibility. That one, if you're unaware, we have a regulation that requires if you build a garage or a secondary building on your home that's greater than 300 square feet, it has to match in some way the same materials. So when we say the type of material compatibility, that's what we're talking about. May look at that one in particular moving forward at some point, because the board in general has kind of moved to allowing it on a pretty regular basis to not necessarily match the. The exterior materials of their home. And then in addition to that, that'd be height, and that's right, that's related to accessory uses. That used to be the number one thing that we would see. We have managed it a few years ago, 22 feet for an accessory building. And now we've seen a great reduction in the number of those.
Came up four feet. We're 18.
Yeah. That's right.
To get rid of. To give them a bunch of them. And now we're back to back seeing them again. We need 24, 26 feet to match the pitch line of roofs.
Well, and and again, we're only seeing six here where it was multiple per month that we were seeing. And to Paul's point, people have bigger toys, people are, you know, that's that's the new standard.
For real.
That's right. The Plating Commission. So obviously, that's, we've had a little bit going on with there. Probably the two biggest items or the biggest item that we had was the North Ridge. So that involved a replat. Excuse me, that involved a major plat, that involved a rezoning. That involved some variances. We had two rezones and 12 replats, of which two were major plats and came before the Planning Commission. Five were minor plats handled by the Plat Committee, and then five administrative plats were handled by me solely. Questions on any of that? Construction permit totals. We had 308 total permits. And that includes both improvement location permits, which are building permits, as well as the other permits that we handle through our office, which is the fence pool sign demolition and mobile food. As you can kind of see, the overall permits were, the total permits were about the same. 308 total in 2024 compared to 326 in 2023. As far as the improvement locations go, were provided with an estimated bill cost for those units every time they they file a permit. That equates about 35 million, $690,000 in investment in 2024. Again, right on par with 22 and 23 from a from a dollar standpoint. However, as I mentioned, 2024 was kind of a soft year. We saw only 55 new residential units created. When I say residential unit, that's either a single family home or an apartment or a duplex, any place where a unit where someone could live. We had 16 single family residential homes. That was about half of what we traditionally had. We had 39 units created. On the bottom left, you can see a picture of Park Place, Park Place up on what used to be the former 30th Street Park. They've entered into phase three and phase four, which will complete that project up there. Added our within this year, we'll add some more units as well, and then a single family home there. North Ridge is pushing dirt. They have. Done a lot of infrastructure work and dirt work, and I believe they'll be starting on some of their homes here in the next couple of weeks. In total, like I said, 55 units were created. If you remember, and I did mention in our prioritization meeting yesterday, the 2023 housing study done by DuBois Strong indicates that we need about 110 units per year. Our cumulative total of about 1,300 units by 2035, just to maintain the current rate of growth that we've had traditionally for the last almost decade or more. So at 55, we've come under the gun, but 25 is shaping out to be a much stronger year, so we look forward to that. Any questions? One of the new additions last year, many of you all know, is we took a part time role in permitting specialists to a full time role. In addition to that, in 23, I believe, the legal department had implemented a GoGov, which is a software that helps us manage and track ticketing. Code enforcement leaned into that, was using that, Kenny, and again, the legal department were using that right away. In 23, they had approximately 126 tickets that they opened. In 24, they did about 136. And I use those numbers to compare kind of what we've done with the new full time permitting. Permitting specialists. Whereas in 23, there was about 12 individual tickets opened in our department. And then in 24, we had about 104, of which 90 of those were either initiated or finished by the new full time permitting specialist. So again, there's a lot of capacity that was added there and allows us to. I use the word enforce lightly to to basically keep the standards that we as a community have put together and enforce those on a little bit easier. Or excuse me, in a little bit more thorough way, which is, you know, downstream effect has freed my time up to do other items for economic development, building, planning. So Adam's done a great job of that. Another item that I spend a lot of time with and work hand in hand with is the heart of Jasper. Of course, you all know the heart of Jasper and I don't steal or thunder, but some of the main things that they had completed over the last 12 to 14 months. The beginning of this year, they received the National Main Street Accreditation. 24, they had seven businesses opened in the district and five relocate to the downtown area. They had $98,000 in private investment, as well as through our F S O program that we help with 14 new signs and S O improvements total. Through the grant, through the donations of a generous donor, they had two businesses receive new business incentives totaling $23,000. Earlier in the year, they merged with Rojack. They added two member, board members, and those were previous Rojack members who have joined their board and as well as added Plat Committee members. And then a future project that they're currently working on that they hope to come to the city here in the next couple of weeks and ask for permission on is lighting up the downtown Jasper. As you may recall, at one point, there was lights across all the buildings on the downtown. They'd like to replicate that with new L E D lights, et cetera, that they've got a grant from the or. Funding from Rojack, as well as donors in their own budget to to sponsor, but they'll come to the Board of Public Works here in the next couple of weeks and talk about that a little bit more. Of course, you know, the we are slowly getting to the end of our phase two of the downtown construction. Current projection is that that will be done completed by Strassenfest. So, you know, barring anything major happening, we look forward to that being completed and having a little bit of normalcy return to the downtown area. Now, the Jasper Social District, not too much hap. I have to say that. In 2024, we open our downtown social district, and that was a major thing for us. I started to say not much happened in way of any change or or anything new. By all, you know, indications, the retail permittees that we have down there have indicated success in that it has been utilized. It has been so far no discernible problems have been identified, and they've all indicated that it will be more successful as they continue to lean into it and and promote it more than than they currently have. You may remember a few weeks ago, we did expand the district. We included three more blocks north to include snaps, to allow snaps and rice and spice to be added into those designated permittees. We've sent supply to the A T C, and they've acknowledged that they've received those. So here in the coming weeks, those those individual establishments will be able to participate in Dora. 2025, again, you know, through June 1st of this year, already got 80 improvement location permits, building permits, as well as numerous other fence pool signs, demolitions and vendor signs. Still, by and large, coming along a lot stronger than 2024 did. And then lastly, the newest and probably the biggest project that we'll see over the next 12 months is through your approval funding. Uh, is, uh, through your approval funding and, and through, uh, um, the Board of Public Works, uh, approval. Um, we have engaged the WGI as the main vendor of our comprehensive plan process. Uh, as well as, um, uh, JSNA, who is an economic development, uh, coordinator and feature IQ, uh, who handles public engagement. Um, between those three, we'll engage over the next twelve to fourteen months. In, uh, community engagement and really trying to find out where the, the community wants. And what their vision is for the next five to ten years for the city of Jasper. Um, some more to come on that, but, uh, as of today, we've, uh, we just received back the contract from them, and we look to execute the contract and, and begin that process here in the next couple of days. So. That would complete my presentation, I would be happy to answer any questions we have.
Any questions for Josh?
Thanks.
I would imagine you're enjoying the good job.
Steve, you did a great job. I hope.
It's one of the nowings, uh. All right, next thing on the agenda is ordinance number two thousand and twenty five dash ten. Available for its first reading. Do they have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by timing? What would you read by title of the, and both, everyone reads that title again? All favors, can I say aye? City Attorney, please read ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten by title.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty five dash ten. An ordinance providing for a uniform code for traffic upon the public streets of the city of Jasper and Indian stop intersections designated.
Right, what's the, do you want us to read? I'm sorry. Don't have the slide.
So, so, uh. There's been quite a long while discussion about the intersection of Ford and Mill Street. Um, we're trying to encourage people to use Ford Street as the pedestrian pathway between, um, the, the cultural center and getting. To other parts of the city, particularly, um, in, in trying to get from the cultural center. Over to the river center, we're trying to get people to take Ford Street over to Jackson and then Jackson down to the stoplight. And cross at the stoplight, that's really the only safe location for people, pedestrians to cross. Um, and also then, not for those not going south to, um, the park thing or the river center, but going, coming to get the downtown area. Using Ford Street, so it's been pointed out that it's, uh, it's difficult to see in that area. For people crossing and we, um, had a number of different strategies that have been suggested. Um, changing the location of parking, um, putting some kind of a, uh, for lack of a better term. Speed bump or something, uh, some other traffic calming device, and at the end of the day. The traffic committee determined that if in fact we are trying to make that a pedestrian route. That it would be mo, um, most appropriate to just go ahead and put a stop sign down. So they recommended to the Board of Public Works and the Board of Public Works passed a resolution that recommended. A stop intersection at Ford and Mill. Um, so that's part of it, and then our downtown, um, revitalization plan from the beginning included, um. Creating four-way stops at Main, one at Main and Fifth, and one at Main and Seventh. So this also adds, um, a four-way stop at each of those two intersections. And then, of course, the next section deletes the old language from the ordinance.
So basically, the town. Plan was stop sign in one block off of Ford's where, just scratch, the stop sign through the. We, as we were looking on the project itself, we kind of forgot about that portion of the project. We have. It's the original intent, you know, it's the, uh, research completed and did the striking and painting, they actually painted the stops. Out there and, and.
Here's some of that, I, I, there's a stop. Stop, not far there, but there's a stop sign there.
Yeah.
On, yeah.
On the, on the.
On the, yeah.
So on Mill, you're gonna stop by the cultural center on Ford, and then again on Sixth. Bill, would you pull your mic to the right? Or, or. Uh, so you're gonna stop there on, by the cultural center, that's Ford. And then again, on Sixth by the police station, and then again on, would that be eight or nine?
Nine.
Okay.
Uh, I guess I should point out that there are, that several other changes that are going to be made, uh, that don't require ordinance changes, so, uh, if you recall. Uh, Mill Street between Third, as you come on Third Avenue, and, uh, go straight and. It, it's a two-lane northbound street, so, uh, we are going to change that between Third and Sixth. To a one lane, and then add several parking spaces, I think we had, um, I think maybe six? It's moving, maybe six, maybe a few more, yeah. On the east side, correct, on the east side of Mill Street. So added parking spaces, uh, one lane northbound between Third and Sixth. Then it would be two lane again between Sixth and Ninth. Uh, and the stop sign, those are the changes for Mill Street.
The only thing I was concerned by on Mill Street is that, I know, watching traffic as they round the corner there by the cultural center, they seem to build up a fair amount of speed. I'm a little concerned, I mean, is there any way to, you know, when you put a new, uh, stop sign there, people are gonna, you know, by, by force of habit. You know, if we can do like a flashy light or something to, to get awareness out so people will stop. And then eventually it can go away, but I'm just concerned about some family walking across there and thinking that they had a stop sign.
Correct, they, the safety committee did talk about that, and I think if you recall, we did the same thing. Um, when we put the stop at, was it Ninth? Ninth and Main, yeah. Uh, so yes, that will definitely be taken into consideration.
And we did, still, of course, of course, we wrote to, if you're heading out, there's a stop sign in the school. I mentioned before, when I started, we liked the, uh, road signs, the indicator signs would be so proud, it would be surrounding it just like. I don't know why I came on out, that's gonna be truly a high-traffic area there, might be in our benefit to. Some of the, some of the blogs and buildings, uh, roads on them, that would be flash. And it was brought up there. In our collaboration with Esther, uh, of the different signs, then they do now the speed signs that are in cities. And they, they've also recommended those flash to draw attention to them, especially on the. Right, yeah. Once, once you, once you get used to it, it's just, you know, to your point. Force of habit, you know, that more family, you know, coming around the corner, you've been doing it for fifteen years, you're not gonna think it's there, and I'm, I'm just, you know, always fearful of that, so especially.
They didn't know that.
The committee preferred a stop sign over, like, the, uh. Some of the terminology, even for the, the deal for pedestrians, like, uh, you see a French light, and then you know, there's a five to six, so.
Just a crossing.
Yeah. And that was just.
They discussed multiple different options, and at the end. At the end of the day, they determined that, um, a, a lot of ways is being put on the fact that we are pointing pedestrians to this intersection. And it was just felt like, uh, stop sign was the, the safest route under those circumstances.
I think you just have to polish this on. The Fifth Street intersection, that we don't put the parking too close to the intersection to cause the same problem to happen there. Where pedestrians crossing, where you can't see the cars coming.
I mean. Truthfully. Everyone in the group agreed, these kinds of intersections where the cars are parked almost up to the intersection are all over the downtown area. I mean, every, every street that has parking allowed on it, just about, the cars park very close to the intersection, so. Um, the, the hope though is, again, because we are directing pedestrians, trying to create a pedestrian route, that this is the safest. Safest option.
Yeah, I, you know. One type of stop sign, the, the, you know, you know, that discussion this week.
Yeah, I did, I couldn't wait.
Good. Any other discussion? If not, I have a motion, Vince, and a second for Bill, all in favors, anybody saying aye, time out, any votes?
And we'll bring that back to the events council meeting, or is it more?
Yes, yeah.
I think we should be doing.
Yes, first. If they can say on the agenda. Do they have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title? Do they have a motion to read by panelists, please? And a motion, all of you, by title, I'm sorry. Second, seven in general. All in favors, can I say aye? City Attorney, please read ordinance number two thousand and twenty five dash eleven.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty five dash eleven. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, approving and authorizing a loan between the gas department and the water department within Jasper Municipal Utilities and other matters connected therewith.
Do they have a motion to read the ordinance in person, I saw read. But I'm, exactly, certainly, but. Yes, simple.
So here are, uh, I'll call them three, uh, watering, watering projects. One is on Dorbit Street from, um, Thirteenth. Um, Thirteenth Street to, I'm trying to think of it, it's Thirteenth Street from, uh, Dorbit to Emily. I think it's what we did, Emily, then Thirteenth Street from Emily to Altmeier was the alternate. And, um, Dorbit Street from Thirteenth down to.
Nine, nine, if it's a nine yard.
Thank you. Could not come up with that. Um, yeah, so those, those projects are, um, were just bid. And there was enough in the budget to cover all of the, both the base projects and the alternate. And so the, um, the bid documents are under review right now from the engineering department, so it's not been let yet, but we, we did go through the bidding process. And then, um, the, the loan would also cover the skyline, if you recall, that project would also cover the costs associated with that project.
When we loan money from one, one thing I don't really understand, we gotta talk. We charge two percent interest. Wow, why do we do that when you're talking about it's money coming in from one utility service to another utility service?
That money to either way, we have to, the earning.
All I understand, right, but. But you can also say that, you can also say that maybe our electric rates are too high. If we, if we have a surplus in there, I, I just, I don't give the two percent.
You're saying you charge two percent.
It's not that.
I say it's zero percent.
It, it actually, um, until just, uh, a couple of years ago, it was, it was higher than that.
Than that, yeah.
We, we have to.
I, I think, I believe that each, each of the utilities distributed as a separate business entity. And so, um, for that reason, they have to justify the, the loans, dollars, and not losing, um, that revenue. In the gas department versus the water department.
It doesn't make sense, it's all.
I think, well, uh. It's not that.
We can raise water rates and pay for it, and, and we don't have to borrow it, it's not encompass everybody's water rates. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, and the water rates are going to have to cover it, they are enough to probably, you know, to, to pay the loan off, right?
So we're running the bomb on the outside.
I think it's a very good business, if you're going from one, uh, utility service to another, I think that's absolutely the right thing to do rather than. Going the outside and paying higher rates, I just, I don't really understand the two percent. Because I, I, it's, it's money from one tax, it's still a tax, it's money from our citizens paying for utility. That we end up with more money in, and we're lending it over here, and then we're charging more money to come back over here to pay it off.
Well, I guess, um, we could consider that all gas rate payers are not the same as the water payers. So, at this point, the water department is, is borrowing from the gas department and, and. You know, guess the thought process, and maybe the legal requirement is that, um, those gas rate payers should be allowed to. That, that utility should be allowed to earn interest. Just like it would if, if we're not loaning those funds to the water department. Because those funds would be invested within that department, for any sum of interest, right? That kind of helps make that a little more sense.
Is your spirit charging, you know, your spirit, really? Anyway.
You know, probably less, yeah. Less than, than, than all water, so. I remember the conversation when we were charging four, getting it down to two percent, we thought, down to two. Two, four, five percent, yeah.
We put a cap on it, it, it was going up based on the, the market rates, and it was getting fifty, I mean. Fifty, no shit. It was having a figure.
And, and does it say in here, just kind of a two-year-old culture, that the loan could be paid off sooner than five years?
It could be, yes, it could be, but it has to be paid off, must be paid off in five years, or, I mean, you know, no, no, it could be a threat following.
It's back based on, on increased rates.
Any questions? Thanks. Any motion, Chad, and second, um. In favors, can I say aye? Time out. Any votes? Yes. Next to the resolution, still wondering what you see there as well, in twenty five dash four. But I have a motion, I have the resolution ready for the time. Hope both of you have a fine one, and a motion, hold it, if you have a minute. Second. Then, yeah. All in favors, can I say aye? Aye. City Attorney, please read resolution twenty twenty five dash four.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty five dash four. The resolution of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, approving sale of real property.
That goes to pass, and the other resolution, time to comply, that's for.
I'll make that motion.
Let's see, I'm sorry. Resolution.
On, on these properties, when they're sold, even though they're programmed and maintained by the park department. When that money is generated, does that go in the general operating funds, or does that go to the park department?
I believe it all goes to the park general.
Park general.
Um, I think the rule is that it has to go back to whoever paid for it, so I'm assuming that the park department paid for it.
Well, I think anybody paid for it, it was a donated property, but.
I just don't mean it to be.
I think that, that's the impression, that's a little point, what happens.
Well, they have been making it for all these years. Um, I, I don't know if anybody has any questions specifically, um, and we'll just, not go through the whole. If anybody has any questions specifically, I will just, not going to go through the whole history of it because I'm sure you're familiar with it. But since the last time that we tried to sell the largest of the parcels, I think the neighboring Idlewild Lake came to the city and identified, actually, the surveyor identified maybe eight or ten items of Idlewild property leaseholders that were approaching on our property. There are things like outhouse and fire pit and somebody in the building corner built across the property line. So, I asked the surveyor to carve out a, I called it a sliver of that lot, Lot Number Three of Camp Carne subdivision, the smallest that he could make it in order to catch all of the improvements. And asked it, Idlewild, would then be willing to pay the appraisal value of that property? I said it was either that or we can make the property as is and they can get all the improvements off the property. So, they chose the first option to purchase that property. So, we carved out point six nine six acres, just a little triangle of the side, the west side of Lot Three of Camp Carne. So, that, and we did go through a, the mayor identified the Park Board as the body to have a public hearing concerning the sale. No one came to speak or remonstrate against the sale. So, the Park Board recommended at its last meeting that we proceed with the sale of Lot Number Three, which is the largest. It was, it's a parcel of twenty-seven acres. This, this sliver of Lot Number Three that I just described. And then Lot Number One, which is the lot that holds the small house on the east side of the property, on the east side of the subdivision. So, if you recall, last time we tried to sell Camp Carne properties, we did try to sell the largest of the lots. But the appraisal, we, we added a value that we thought was appropriate for the timber that was on the, the property. Instead of using the average of the two appraisals, we reduced and increased value. So, since it did not sell, now we are asking for the average of the two appraisals, which I think I, I sent you. It's been a little while since I've sent that information. But we will advertise in the Herald, Lot Number One with the home on it and Lot Number Three, which is the lot with no improvements, twenty-seven, again, it's approximately twenty-seven acres. And then we will sell directly to Idlewild, the, as the abutting property owner, that small portion of six nine six acres. Any questions?
What happened to the one across the, across the road?
That sold.
That did sell.
Yeah, that sold the last time we went through this process.
We had those numbers. They asked me if I sold it or not. I didn't like that. It's about twenty-two thousand, but we have to.
So. Only in twenty-five thousand four hundred. But one is ninety-eight thousand two hundred.
That's the lot with the house, right?
Yes.
And do you, do you know how many acres that, that is?
About two.
Two acres with a house under a belt?
Well, it's got no settler. And that's the reason that it didn't get advertised the last go-round. While we had the two appraisals done on that property, those appraisals did not consider the condition of the subject. And when we determined that that was inoperable, then somebody came out and looked at the soils and do that whole analysis and then gave us an estimate on the cost that it would take to install in the subject on that lot. And so, I forwarded that information to the appraisers and they adjusted their appraisals accordingly. So, this new number is the average of the two adjusted appraisals.
And it won subject to. That's, this lot is.
Yes.
It's okay with the pair. Any other questions? During time, I have a motion. Let's see, second, Bill. Can I say aye? We have a book, we'll come up to, yes, some devices.
I have an application for Matt Myers with Honeyberg Machine Works and Ray Stratton-Pate with Precision Metal. They both passed and it's both been approved by the, yeah, super.
Make a motion to approve both of them? Do they have a motion for that? First, I'll say it. Second, the ball. Discussion. During time, I'd see if it was tied up or just going to. I don't see it. All in favor, can I say aye? Just a application for the JCS support. I have a motion, can I say this? I have a motion, can I? Can I say it?
Just so that you all know, Lauren is working on putting together a proposal for a questionnaire and kind of a procedure to go through for council appointments. So, as soon as she's got that information together, we'll be forwarding that your way. So, chat, I've had a number of conversations related to that.
Is there a way for us to talk about that, look at it before we bring it to the board for people then or?
Yeah, we'll send it out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Do they have a motion table for Bill and second for Jen? All in favor, can I say aye? Questions?
We'd like to request acceptance of donations to the Park Department. And it's about five hundred and sixty dollars. Those are restricted funds for the Mike Aiding endowments. The Park Department has approved those restrictions. They did not have any unrestricted donations. And then the Arts Department had three hundred and twenty-five dollars in unrestricted donations from various donors. And they had twelve thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars in restricted donations. And then the Art Department approved those restrictions.
Make a motion to approve the donations. Version, go ahead. Second, second, that's, we'll discuss. And it's back to the engineer who's stepping up and helping find many things that play out. So, appreciation goes out to all of you. Do they have comments? All in favor, accept the donations. Second, can I say aye?
I did have one other comment, I'm sorry, back to the board appointments. I don't know if you have all been made aware, but there is a new Indiana law that requires us to include on all meeting notices and agendas and on our board webpages information about each of the board members that have been appointed. So, it has to include the board member name, who the appointing body was, and what their term is. So, our agendas will be changing and you'll see those changes and I guess that you might wonder why. And that's the reason.
Do you want to say? What information do you? Go ahead. Back, including the agenda, I would ask. Don't move. Don't, don't, say ball. All in favor, can I say aye?